July.
You got it circled.
It's July 19, 2021, to order at 7:06 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Kelly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. According to Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, please note that tonight's meeting is being both audio and video recorded. If anyone else present is recording this meeting, please identify yourself for the audience. Thank you. Otto, would you please take a roll call?
Certainly. Counselor Powers.
Present.
Counselor Kelly.
Here.
Counselor O'Brien.
Here.
Counselor Sullivan.
Here.
Counselor Clune.
Here.
Counselor Eager.
Here.
Counselor DiStefano.
Here.
Counselor Beck.
Here.
President Griffin.
Here.
I would move to approve the agenda as posted.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Sullivan. Any discussion on the approval of the agenda as outlined? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
President Griffin votes yes, by a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Motion passes. No student representative, public hearings. We'll turn it over to Counselor DiStefano to open the public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing relative to the utility petition submitted by Eversource Energy for gas main replacement in the area of Oleander Street.
Second.
Public hearing is now open. Is anybody from, is, or anybody from Eversource present? Please. If you'll give us an overview of this, that would be helpful for the audience.
Absolutely. Good evening, Council. Thank you. My name's Patrick Vincenti from Eversource Gas Company. I'm here to propose a gas main replacement project on Oleander Street and Primrose Street in West Springfield. Our operations department has reported that the gas main on Oleander Street and Primrose Street is in poor condition, and we would like to proactively replace that cast iron gas main with a new and upgraded plastic gas main. As part of this project, we'll install about 800 feet of plastic gas main on Elm Street, gas main on Oleander Street and Primrose Street, and that will allow us to retire in place the existing cast iron main on Oleander Street and Primrose Street. Included in this project is all the service work on Oleander Street and Primrose Street to tie the existing customers over to the newly installed plastic main on Oleander and Primrose Street. That's the summary of the project.
Great, thank you, sir. I appreciate that. We appreciate that, I should say. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council by way of the Oleander Street gas replacement? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kelly. Any further discussion on closing the public hearing? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin votes yes, by a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. The public hearing is closed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counselor Powers, would you move to open the next public hearing?
Move to open the public hearing, the general ordinance amendment proposed by Mayor William Reichelt to amend Section 25-12 of the general ordinances related to establishing a bear hole revolving fund.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kelly. The public hearing is now open.
Do you want me to give a little background on this?
Sure.
So, this is, as you know, we closed down the conservation restriction for bear hole last month. That got finalized as part of our discussions with the council. In approving that conservation restriction, you know, a very strong position that the council had was that the money that we get be set aside for bear hole and not be put into the general fund, so that $1 million we're proposing to establish a revolving fund for. So, this is just to change the language to, of the current ordinance that has all those different revolving funds established. It would add the bear hole revolving fund, this money would be kept set aside, and then annually the council would approve a spending limit as part of the budget process, as you do for all those other revolving funds, and then any money spent out of there would need the recommendation of the conservation agent and the approval of the mayor on top of that.
Thank you, Attorney O'Brien Scott. Anybody wish to address the council this evening by way of the bear hole revolving fund? Seeing none, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kelly. Any further discussion on closing the public hearing? Seeing none, go to a vote. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
President Griffin votes yes, by a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Public hearing is closed. Moving on to public comment, anybody wish to address the council this evening by way of public comment? Thank you.
President Griffin and members of the council and members of the public, I, we had the ceremony for the bear hole.
So, that'll be during petitions, remonstrances, and communications? This is public comment where individuals are, address the council with their concerns?
Instead of speak up, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's the same.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll call on you right away, though. I'll call on you right away during that, George, which is coming up really quick. So, seeing none, let's move on to approval of the minutes, move to approve the regular and public hearing minutes of 6:21, 2021.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kelly. Any discussion on the minutes? Want to thank Counselor Sullivan for his review of the, of the minutes. We did change them after his review, and he does review them for us, and picked up something today. They were changed. It was a, just a clerical thing, but want to thank Counselor Sullivan for his, his review. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin votes yes, by a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. The minutes are passed. Now, petitions, remonstrances, and communications. Counselor Kelly?
Okay, I'm in the right section now, right?
Right church, wrong pew, the last one.
Right church, wrong pew, oh, well. I, I got there a few minutes late to the ceremony. It's sometimes very tough to get out of Tatum Hill Road and the, onto Westfield Street, but I met many citizens there who were very, very, very glad that the, the bear hole complex is going to be protected as far as we know on, into the future. And State Representative Finn was there, as well as the mayor, and several people from Audubon and DCR. And I think it's a very good thing. It might, might not seem as important right now, but land in West Springfield has become very premium, and there were, there were people who would like to covet that land for other than nature purposes, but I think we've managed to preserve it on into the future, and it's a great thing.
Thank you, Counselor Kelly. Any other petitions, remonstrances, or communications? I have one, and there was a supervisor from the forestry department who passed away in a motorcycle accident in May, and in June. I, I should have read something about Craig Vosper, or introduced something on behalf of Craig Vosper. Craig was a wonderful guy. I only remember him, I remember him distinctly, I shouldn't say I only remember, but I remember him distinctly during the tornado, and he was part of the forestry department there. And he was working vociferously on that project, and got a chance to meet him back then. That was my initial conversation with him. But I know that he's done tremendous work, or had done tremendous work over his 20 years in the forestry department. Again, he perished and passed away in a motorcycle accident on May 26th, so if we can have a moment of silence on Craig's behalf, I'd certainly appreciate that. Thank you. Any other petitions, remonstrances, or communications? Moving on the agenda, Counselor Powers, if you would tell us what we would like, what you would like to do with the zoning amendment on commercial kennels?
As we had a good discussion tonight, but we did continue it in our budget, budget subcommittee meeting. We continued it in our ordinance and policy subcommittee meeting today. We're going to grab some information. There's an individual that is in the process of being shut down on River Road that has a great reputation, that we're going to ask for, right now, there's really no minimum requirements for, you know, dog to person race ratio, there's no minimum requirements for square footage. With the feedback we've gotten from the town, we're going to do a little bit more legwork in the subcommittee on possible minimum requirements for square footage, person per dog ratio, and we're going to reach out to a couple outside day kennels that we've heard good things about to see what that is. So, I would expect in our August meeting for those to be procured for us, and that'll be coming by way of a second general ordinance amendment, but we're not going to vote on this one until we have that to vote with it, too. So, I think tonight, probably make a motion to continue that to the August meeting.
Second.
Perfect. So, so the motion is to continue that to August 16th. Is there any further discussion on the continuance of the, of the motion? Or any other further discussion about that? Seeing none, thank you, Chairman Powers, for your leadership in this. Let's go to a vote. Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin votes yes, by a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Motion passes. If anybody does want any information on that, certainly they can call the council office. Otto is monitoring the, Clerk Frisell is monitoring the phones. We are getting some feedback on this, so certainly I urge you to continue to have conversations with your counselors on this as well between now and the August 16th meeting, because your input is necessary, so thank you. Counselor Powers, right back at you.
I move to approve the zoning ordinance amendment proposed by Mayor William Reichelt to expand the exemptions to projects requiring site plan review.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kelly. Vote of the subcommittee?
So, we voted three to nothing in favor of this.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Any further discussion or any feedback from the chairman?
None at this time. There were a lot of opinions put in, but none at this time.
Thank you. Any further discussion amongst my fellow counselors? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin votes yes, by a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Motion passes. You realize why I'm going so quick, Counselor Clune, right?
I have no idea.
Well, after, I'll be honest with you, after last meeting, there was a couple of counselors who contacted me and said they wanted to, wanted to fire me, and liked me to relieve my position as president, because you were, you got, we went so quickly and so smoothly in the last meeting, so I'm on my best behavior tonight. Counselor Powers, again, to you on PUDs.
I move to approve the zoning ordinance amendment proposed by Mayor William Reichelt, Council President Brian Griffin, and Counselor Daniel O'Brien, to amend the provisions related to signs permitted in the PUD zoning district.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kelly. Report of the committee?
So, we also voted three to nothing in favor of this. We actually kind of got into a little bit further detail about trying to help with maybe some directional signage in certain areas to help people if you're coming from a different piece of the Rubedale Road, which really is where the PUD zoning district falls in, and it seemed like that would be a different task within and of itself, so we did not go down that avenue today, but this should help the businesses in that area and the landowner with signage for directly getting, you know, consumers to those businesses.
Thank you, Chairman Powers. Any further discussion on this? Thank you. Let's go to a vote. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin votes yes, by a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Motion passes. Back to you, Counselor Powers.
Point of inquiry?
Sure.
Since D and E will be looking to move to next week because they haven't been voted out of the subcommittee, can I move both of those? No? Okay. That was worth it. I'm going to move for paragraph 9D, motion move 9D to our August meeting. The purpose is, is the town, the ordinance and policy subcommittee has not voted that out yet. We're still actually working on some revisions to that, trying to ensure some safety pieces.
So, I'll go second for, let me just.
Sorry.
So, I'll second that, and then you can go right into discussion.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Reason being is, we're still working on some safety pieces for barriers or structures that are going to be protecting individuals if you're on, if you're on a, a public way, and we're also looking at parking lot minimums and maximums for usage in private parking lots. We're also looking at the type of material a business owner can use to allow people to sit outside.
So, the motion is to continue to August 16th? Any further discussion? Seeing none, move to a vote. Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin votes yes, by a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Motion passes. Counselor Powers?
I'm also going to make a motion to move 9E to our August 16th meeting.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kelly.
Purposes behind the request here, for summertime ordinance and policy subcommittee, we actually seem to have a decent amount on our list. I would like to say it's the diligence of my colleagues that are looking into what is on our agenda, but with that being said, we actually have not spoken about that yet, so I'd like to make a motion for that purpose.
Any further discussion on the, on the motion? Seeing none, total vote. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin votes yes, by a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Motion passes. No appropriations. Reports of officer boards or committees, human resources did not meet the seating, correct?
We did not, but there was a request individually, not as a quorum, to ask the mayor and the city solicitor for the updated job description for the clerk of the council position.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Sullivan. Chairman Sullivan, I should say. Budget, Chairman Beck?
So, budget did meet this evening. We discussed two items which are going to be addressed shortly under new business, and I'll address them at that time.
Thank you. Ordinance and policy, Counselor Powers?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. We do actually have a full agenda. As you've heard, we did vote on a few items. We still have a few items left on our agenda, so for the public, you know, that is the outdoor seating ordinance. If you have any input, any suggestions, any ideas, obviously, those are more than welcome, and we still have to discuss the bear hole revolving fund as well.
Thank you. Traffic and safety didn't meet this evening, correct, Chairman Eager?
We did not meet today.
Thank you. And utilities?
Mr. President, yes, we did meet this afternoon, and I'll speak to the item that was on the agenda a little later on in the main agenda.
Great. Unfinished business. I'll turn it over to you, Counselor DiStefano, for the Memorial Ave.
So, based upon what I've received so far, I am going to move to approve the proposed utility petition from Eversource relative to Memorial Avenue.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kelly. Back, back to you, Chairman DiStefano. Thank you for your leadership in this.
You're welcome, and I'm, all credit really goes to Kate and Director Colson to continue to work and massage this through the many channels, through the Emerald City in Boston, I guess. There's been a whole lot of information that's come forward, and I don't know, Kate, I guess I would defer to you as to whether or not I should, I should ask Rob to speak on what he's learned before making the amendment, or proposing the amendment, or should I make the amendment first and then ask Rob to speak to it?
That.
Matters not?
It's total, totally up to you. I think maybe letting him update you, and then you can move to amend based on what he updates you on, might make sense.
And respectfully, through the chair, I'd invite Director Colson up.
Thank you, Counselor DiStefano, and so, Eversource have been wanting to replace their 16-inch gas main in Memorial Ave. They are here tonight. Over the last few months here, we've been talking about it, and in talking with Mass DOT, they've provided some guidance for us to have a third-party inspector for the section where the Morgan Bridge, Morgan Sullivan Bridge Project was just done, and what we're going to do there is, where that, all that work was just done, we're going to have a third-party inspector to just be on site the whole time and make sure that everything goes back the way that it was just done on the, under the Mass DOT's inspection. And the rest of the road is all going to be reconstructed through our tip project over the next few years, so that's just going to get a temporary patch, just like any normal utility would do in our section. So, that's about it. I think Eversource is, they're here tonight, they could speak to, I think, on it, and I think they're planning on trying to get all the work done next year before the Biggie starts, if I remember right.
Great.
And so, it's, it should be all set.
Thank you.
So, with that, I would move to amend the motion to condition the approval of the petition on the following. Eversource at its sole cost and expense will hire a qualified independent third-party inspector, subject to the town's approval, to be at the job site full-time. Eversource will restore the job site to its condition prior to Eversource's work and in compliance with the Mass DOT specifications for the Morgan Sullivan Bridge Project, and the work will be subject to approval by Mass DOT as applicable.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kelly. Any discussion on the amendment? Counselor O'Brien?
So, this is getting pushed to '22? Yes?
My understanding on the work for the reconstruction to be done won't be done until next year before the Biggie.
Next, so 2022?
Correct.
Right.
This year, they want to get the, the job totally nailed down as far as exactly the scope of work, find any problems that could arise before they start, so they're doing some test pits, some potholing, they call it, and then they're going to be able to get more competitive pricing, too, from their vendors, to keep our, you know, gas rates low as they can.
But the, so the issue with this third party is, you've just laid down this perfect road, and they're going to tear up the perfect road, so you want to make sure they put it back the way they found it?
Exactly. There's that 600 feet from Colony to the, to the bridge. It's all brand-new. It's, you know, there's some areas where they're going to be going through some, probably some island areas and stuff, so we'll have some extra help there.
And what leverage does this third party have to ensure that everything's, does he have enforcement, or is he advisory? What's his, really, his role?
Be inspection, and they'll, they'll work together with Connor and I in Public Works. You know, we'll work together with Eversource, and we'll get it back the right way. We'll all be there to make sure, you know, what's going on, so we can keep each other in a loop. Otherwise, one of us would have to be out there the whole time. We're just not staffed to do that.
That's what it's designed, is to, to have a full-time every, otherwise, it would be you or he that would have to be there to ensure.
Yeah, full-time, so that we can, you know, assure Mass DOT that when they invest in projects, especially in our town, you know, they don't just get dug up the following year, and we, we look after them, and, you know, work, work as a team.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
If I may, just to answer Counselor O'Brien's question, and correct me if I'm wrong, Rob, but in addition to the third-party inspector and any issues we would raise, they also have to make sure they're in compliance with the Mass DOT standards that existed prior to them ripping it up and after it was completed for Morgan Sullivan, so the state would have a say in making sure it's done the right way, or put back the right way.
Yeah, the way we're approving it, if, if the state wants to step in, they can, but, you know, they, like I said, we do work together, they rely on us to make sure that their work stays, like, you know, to remain as it should, to, to make sure it does not get, put back the way it's supposed to be.
Thank you.
Any further discussion amongst my fellow counselors on the amendment? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin votes yes, by a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Motion passes. That becomes the main motion. We will have to vote on the main motion, and any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?[1659.64]
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin votes yes, by a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. The main motion passes. Thank you again to everybody. Back to you, Counselor DiStefano.
Move to approve the proposed utility petition from EverSource relative to the area of O'Leander Street?
Second.
Second by Counselor Kelly. Report of the committee?
So the committee met this evening on this. As you've heard from Patrick Inceci already, the proposed project description, the Subcommittee voted unanimous affirmative to support the petition.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin votes yes, by a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes. Thank you, Patrick. Moving on, Counselor Beck?
Move to approve the proposed intermunicipal agreement between the town of West Springfield and Springfield Water and Sewer Commission.
Second.
Second by Counselor Kelly. Report of the committee?
So the committee did take this up this evening. Basically, the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission takes all of West Springfield's sewage waste and processes it, processes it for us at Bondi's Island, and we pay them based on the volume. And so this basically takes the agreement that's been in place for the last six years and extend it five more years to do that. And we voted three to zero to approve.
Any further discussion amongst my fellow counselors? I'm just going to turn to you right away.
Through the chair, a couple of questions, if I may, to Rob or Connor. We had talked about it briefly earlier. I just thought it'd be important to have everybody have the benefit of the information. So Connor, I guess you're up. One question is, how many metering hookup locations does West Springfield have that connects into the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission facility, POTW?
So we have two pump stations that pump directly to Bondi's Island, one at Bridge Street and another on Agua Mav. The, both force main flow towards the treatment facility at Bondi's Island, and they monitor our inflow at a weir station that they have at that location.
Okay, through the chair, maybe a couple of series of questions.
Sure.
Do we meter our outflow from those two pumping stations?
The Riverdale Street Sewer Pump Station, the Bridge Street Sewer Pump Station, and the Agua Mav Sewer Pump Station, through the last SRF projects that we've done in those areas, they were all outfitted with outflow monitoring, so we do have the capability of monitoring outflows through those locations.
Okay, so I'm aware on the billing, it's based on flow, but it's also based on TSS, total suspended solid, and BOT, biological organic demand or whatever. So when they test that twice for two weeks, I know that West Springfield tests at different times. So my question again is, can you get a split sample, meaning they get their sample, we get a sample, so that we can do an analysis on the samples to confirm their results? Is that possible to schedule that?
So the town does have an independent consulting firm that tests flows at the Bridge Street and Agua Mav pumping stations. It is possible that we can work something out with the Sewer Commission to have those agents, also meet them at their testing location to take a split sample. That's something that we'd have to work out. I don't believe it would put us over the price threshold to have to have an official contract. So I think we'd be able to do that just through PO. We would just need to work out the mechanics of when to have our consultants meet up with them to split the sample.
Right, that'd be great, because we'd be testing it at a different time than them otherwise, so we wouldn't have any comparison on the results. And I know there's a 72-hour, you know, chain of custody issue where you have to test them, so I'm sure that would be part of the scheduling also.
Absolutely.
I guess that's it for now.
Counselor O'Brien?
The monitoring, do our numbers match their numbers that you're aware of?
We get flow numbers from them every quarter. I haven't looked at our monthly flow monitoring logs in the past quarter. One of our staff members, who was recently taken a physician up outside the town, was the one to go through that. So that's one thing I meant to catch up on, but have not had the opportunity to do so. But I could absolutely, at your request, go back the last two, three quarters and see how our monitoring flows match up with the commission's flows.
That would be important, I would assume, right? Because we're getting charged by the volume, so if they say it's larger than what we say, we have an area to discuss with them.
Yes.
Thank you.
One more question through the chair. So, understanding we're charged by the flow, but we're also charged by, as I mentioned, total suspended solids and BOT. So how, how do they determine the rate? I mean, is it based on all the three different factors? Or how do they come up with the rate that they charge us?
So from my understanding, the way they charge us is a little different than how we charge our customers, or at least our industrial customers. They, they charge us on a monthly basis, and at the end of the year, what they'll do is, they'll look at the amounts of flow that the town puts out, and they'll, they'll run their averages, they'll find out what our effluent looks like in terms of, like you said, you know, BOT and TSS. And at the end of the year, what happens is, and I think, Rob could correct me if I'm wrong, but at the end of the year, if they find that based on their estimates, that they either overestimated how much effluent and how much our effluent contained did or did not have, it could be more or less than what they had originally estimated, and we might do a true-up at the end of the year. Hopefully, at the end of the year, our flows were better or less than the previous year, and that our effluent had less suspended solids and BOT. And at that point, in that true-up, we'd have a surplus left over, so our bill might be lower the next year. Or if it looks like if our output has increased in terms of flow, TSS, and BOT, the rates might increase for the next year to compensate.
So they'll do that on a calendar year, so you can budget it for the fiscal year, is that correct?
I believe so.
Is there any direct billing, like any of the big boys, like the utility or AgroMark, or they all come through our system?
Yes, we have two major companies that we do industrial billing for. The first of those is AgroMark. They are the largest contributor to the town's effluent in terms of industrial users. The second, to a much lesser extent, would be Central Power operating out of the power plant on Memorial Avenue.
Okay, but they come through our system, not direct to them?
They do come through our system, and we charge them directly. They don't have any direct charges to the Sewer Commission.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Kelly?
One of the things we talked about in the Subcommittee was that the Springfield Water Commission is made up of people who are from Springfield, and we ask you to look into whether, if needed, we could have an observer at those meetings. And I think that would, would help us. Right now, we're spending six and a quarter million dollars on treating our sewage, and, you know, anything we can do to keep that bill true and accurate, I think, would be very good for us. And I thank you for your good attention to it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Counselor Kelly. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Counselor Beck?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Griffin votes yes, by a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. Back to you, Chairman Beck?
Move to approve the proposed acquisition of sewer and construction easements at 65 Apricot Hill Lane.
Second.
Second by Counselor Kelly. Report of the committee?
So we did take this up in committee tonight. Basically, this is a $20,000 purchase of an easement for a property, a home with, you